I'd like to call to order the June meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. We're going to begin the evening by going around and introducing ourselves and sharing what we are reading if we care to. So, Chris, why don't we start with you?
Yes, I'm Chris Hall, and I am starting Dead Letters from Paradise by Ann McMahon.
I am Kari Essery, and my summer reading is called The Writing Rope. And I'm listening to podcasts about it, too. It's about school stuff.
I just picked up book two of the Gilded One series, The Merciless, I think, is the title.
All right. I'm Greer Carson. I'm reading a book on object-oriented programming languages for digital audio workstations, and my family's playing Zelda Tears of the Kingdom with the rest of the gaming world.
I'm kind of between books when it comes, I'm sorry, I'm Chris Harrison, and I'm kind of between books when it comes to reading, but I just finished listening to The Gallery by Laura Marks Fitzgerald.
I'm David Ferguson, and I think I was on the same book last month. I'm still on The Comfort Crisis.
I'm Kathy Loser, and I'm reading a book, 365 Days Living as an Empath. Yeah, nonfiction.
The first item on our agenda is our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 17 board meeting, the monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, personal report, and board meeting calendar?
So moved.
Do we have any questions or comments on any of these items?
I was just curious, on page 76, which is a long way in the packet, a lot of the line items say cash disbursement, and it says Chase Card Services many places. We don't have to list specifically what that is anymore?
I think there is a report that shows the detail of
Okay.
Chase bill.
Okay, sorry.
But I can send that.
That's okay. I just, I'm sure you know, but I just noticed it was a lot.
No, that'd be great if you could send that around, Gary.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too.
Okay.
I have one clarification I'd like to make. As of the May numbers that you see in the financial report, we've actually been overestimating some of the change order costs as we wind down the Southwest project. So I am pleased to share tonight that we are actually $75,506 in the black on the project as of today, and that includes tonight's proposed change orders. And we will have a few more to bring to you in July, but it does look hopeful that we're going to come in right at or even a little under budget for Southwest.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we will turn things over to Greer for his director's monthly report.
So in the report, I realize I neglected to specify whether the number of library cardholders increased or decreased since the previous month. I just left increase/decrease there. It's actually a 569 individual increase for the month of May, which is fantastic. I'd also like to point out that we had a notable increase in program attendance and computer use last month. We are very happy to have partnered again with the Bloomington Fire Department to lay about 20 cubic yards of mulch on our downtown library property. Fire Department does this annually as part of their community service and physical training requirements. And our finals kits were hit with students at Bloomington High School North, and we received some very positive feedback from the school librarian on those kits. Our Ellisville team also provided some similar end-of-year final support for students here at the branch. Happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to make a small clarification. On page 98, you talk about the lunch for the kid, for the truck that comes for the kids, and I think your report says it's for families, but it's only for the students.
That's correct. Thank you.
Just, I brought my son to it and said, oh, would you want to try this? And he's like, no. It just seemed too. But I think it's a lovely service, and I'm glad that the library is a central location that it can be housed at. Very happy to, that it's here.
Any other questions or comments for Greer? And I apologize for getting up in the middle. My iPad died. So, it ran out of juices.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I have, I have a, an agenda at least, so I'm good. Yeah, I'll be good.
Yeah, we can share.
Just have mine, and I can share.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Just looking at all the change orders.
Okay, perfect. All right, next on the agenda is our old business, and we have some change orders and updates on the Southwest branch. Do we have a motion to approve the change orders?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and Greer will bring us up to speed on the updates and change orders.
Okay, the fun stuff first. Our grand opening was a tremendous success, thanks to everyone in our community who came out to enjoy their new branch library and to show support for MCPL. Next month, we will share some Southwest statistics with everybody, including door count, circulation programs, patron comments, and requests, but just to share a few sneak peek statistics. To date, nearly 10,000 items have been checked out at Southwest since the grand opening on Friday, June 9. We registered 145 new patrons at Southwest over the course of just the opening weekend, 140 of which registered as Southwest patrons specifically. And we checked out over 2,000 items just on June 9 alone, close to 4,000 items over the course of that opening weekend. And if you were there and you saw the activity on June 9, you probably noticed that a lot of it was people checking stuff out. So that's really, really encouraging. Thanks to our great Southwest branch team for their outstanding attitudes and work ethic and for welcoming our community of Southwest patrons with enthusiasm. Thanks also to the many MCPL departments and individual staff who put in hours and efforts to help bring our new branch online. A particular thank you to communications and marketing for coordinating so much good local media coverage, and this undoubtedly helped generate the buzz that resulted in roughly 6,000 people showing up for the event on June 9 over a five-hour period. The only criticism we received is over the lack of sidewalk connectors from the main entrance to the existing Gordon Pike sidewalk, and that's a very valid criticism. We have since shared information about this on our website, our social media accounts, and in numerous individual phone calls I've had with patrons since June 9. So to clarify for everybody, sidewalk connectors were indeed part of our original construction plan. Our understanding was that the timeline for the Gordon Pike expansion was more or less immediate, and that any connectors we poured would be rendered unusable within a month or two, so we decided to hold off on pouring those connectors until after the Gordon Pike project was completed. However, our architects have since confirmed with the county highway department an updated timeline for the Gordon Pike project, and the road expansion in Roundabout isn't expected to begin until much later in 2024. Therefore, we're going to proceed with our plan to build sidewalk connectors from the main entrance to the existing Gordon Pike sidewalk. In order to make this work, we're going to have to position the main entrance connector a little further west than was originally planned, and do some additional grading work to the site to make it level, and we will bring this plan to you all in July. Happy to answer any questions about Southwest now that we're open.
I have a question about how a patron changes their branch. I spoke with a patron who was online and was trying to move what they're assigned to now that the new branch is open. Is that something that they call for?
Oh, certainly, yeah. We'll call or do over chat.
Okay.
I don't believe, and I'd have to confirm, Chris, you might know this, whether or not you can do that yourself with your online account.
In this conversation, it seemed like you couldn't, so I was wondering what people should do.
I wouldn't be surprised, but I'm not sure. I can confirm that, but you can certainly call or do chat or come in, and we can do that for you.
Okay.
It seems like for your holds, you can do that yourself if you want to change the holds.
Right, you can change your hold pickup location, but to designate yourself as a primary source, Southwest or Ellisville or outreach patron or whatever, I think you have to have staff help to do that.
That's correct. If you change your default pickup location in your assigned branch, you have to contact us.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about, you know, making the sidewalk connectors. So we put those in, and then in 2024, they start the construction on the Gordon Pike. So if they tear up our sidewalks, they have to put them back in, right?
That's true, but they probably won't tear our sidewalks up. They'll tear up their sidewalks, and our sidewalks will go to nothing, and then we'll have to connect part of our sidewalk to where the new Gordon Pike sidewalk goes.
Is there a way that we can convince them to do that? That they, you know, this is a service to the community?
Yeah, we're going to try.
Okay, good. I would like to see them reach out.
Yeah, yeah, we're certainly going to try.
And try to do the right thing.
Our concern at the beginning of the project, of course, was the opening of the branch coinciding with the expansion of the road, and particularly the building of the Roundabout right there at the corner. And so we're glad that the timeline is different, but the end result is still going to be the same. They're going to expand the road and tear up the sidewalk.
Yeah. That road is a Monroe County road, correct?
Correct.
So that would be the county commissioners.
Yes.
Right. So I would encourage everybody to call people that are the Southwest branch residents, users of the library. I think they can make a nice call to suggest that, you know, you need to make these connectors. We have a beautiful resource, now let's make it happen.
And some of the nice folks I've spoken with over the last week and a half are already doing that.
Good, good.
Yeah. They're not quiet.
Because they work for us.
That's right. That's right.
Any other questions or comments about the updates for the Southwest branch? Okay, next we'll tackle our change orders, and are we doing, let's see, three?
Four.
Four, okay. I suppose we need to do it on these individually?
Yeah, I'll just kind of go through these like I usually do. Feel free to jump in with questions at any point. Number 32, proposed change order is for wire mesh partition.
Let me go ahead and ask for a.
Yeah, sure.
So, do I have a motion to approve change order 32 about the woven wire mesh partition in at roof ladder?
So moved. Second.
Okay, go ahead, Greer.
Okay. This was something we spotted during one of the final walkthroughs as a potentially serious safety hazard. There's a vertical ladder that leads up to the rooftop just inside of the emergency exit stairwell. It's the only way to get up to the rooftop. There's nothing next to that ladder except a little metal railing that looks over the stairwell and a drop of about 20 feet. So if you were up on the roof and you were coming down that little hole and you slipped, you would not only fall to the bottom of the ladder, you could potentially go over the edge of that railing an additional 20 feet. That just seemed like a no-brainer. So that one is $2,106.
Any questions or comments about this change order? All those in favor of approving change order number 32 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we will move on to change order 34, and this is the EarthCam project camera. So it's added cost for installing and using the EarthCam project camera for the duration of the project. We have a motion to approve this change order.
Second.
Okay.
All right, so we kind of committed to the EarthCam project at the beginning of our construction project, and now it's just come due. It's basically the real-time camera footage that we had on our website throughout the entire project. It's mounted on a pole on the southeast corner of our site, and it's provide, it provided exciting real-time footage of the construction project for a very long time. Also kind of serves as a visual record of our project in a way that we might not have had otherwise unless we had our folks out there every day taking pictures or video. And it allowed us to piece together that really cool time-lapse video that we played on the digital signage monitor in the lobby on the grand opening day, so that was really great. Our only regret was the location we chose for mounting the camera was great up until we put the frame up, and then you can't see anything past that one corner of the building. And admittedly, I think it would have been cost prohibitive, prohibitive and logistically challenging to come up with a better alternative, because any corner of the site you're going to choose, you're only going to see that corner. We weren't going to do multiple cameras. But after we looked at the footage sometime around maybe January or February, we thought, okay, well then that's as good as it's going to get. We're not going to get the rest of the building. But we do think that the return on this, you know, you might say it can be measured by the community excitement that it helped generate, so we're glad that we did it. The total for the EarthCam project is $13,800.
Question. Do we own that camera now?
So I just talked to Ryan Strasser today about who owns the camera footage and the data associated with it, including the number of hits on our website and everything. We believe that we own it, but he's confirming for us.
Okay.
We don't own the actual camera, but we're going to own the data.
So we borrowed the camera?
We borrowed the camera, yes. But he's, yeah, Ryan's going to confirm those details for us now.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving change order proposal number 34 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we're going to be looking at change order 35. Do we have a motion to approve change order 35, which is labor and material and equipment for building temporary heating?
Second.
And go ahead and.
Okay, so this is the big one we've been talking about since, I think, January. It's related to an unexpected temporary heating solution, and the reason for the cost can be traced back to the first set of construction delays. So I'm just going to take a moment to kind of walk us through the timeline. First, there was unforeseen rock excavation, which set us back about five weeks in terms of the original schedule. Once the framing was up for the building, we then encountered an additional five-week delay in structural concrete pouring. Because of the cascading effect that construction delays can have, we hit December before the concrete pouring could be completed. That's late in the year and low in temps for concrete work, and permanent heating for the building required a reasonable thermal envelope, which includes framing insulation and drywall, none of which was done by the time winter hit. So Strasser looked into electrical and gas options for temporary heating with the goal of setting up a system that met minimum heating requirements for the work that needed to be done, and the most cost-effective solution was through Sunbelt systems, which involved renting furnaces and propane tanks. The system was in place until late March, at which point the thermal envelope was completed, and our HVAC system was up and running. And the final invoice was then sent to Strasser in mid-April. So the total cost of our temporary heating system is $45,013.22.
Questions or comments about this change order? All those in favor of approving change over 35 related to building temporary heating signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, and next, I believe we're voting on the one that's paper copy, is that correct?
That is correct. There's a, there's an updated paper copy of this change order. It's a little different from the one in the packet.
Okay, so the next change order is change order 36, revision number one, and this is for a hardware change door, and the original one that's in the packet was for the amount of $4,652. This one is for a little less, for $3,255. Do we have a motion to approve this change order?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
So this was a result of the county building department's review of our facility. They indicated a need to change one of the egress doors from an electrified mortise lock set to an exit device, which is a crash bar, basically. So the total cost of that work, as Chris said, is $3,255. The price came down a bit because Strasser was able to use their own hardware to switch out the lock to a crash bar.
Questions or comments regarding this change order? All those in favor of approving change order 36, revision one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. That takes care of our old business. Next, moving on to new business. We have just one item, and it regards the COVID leave policy renewal. Do we have a motion to approve the COVID leave policy renewal?
Second.
Okay, and Greer's going to update us on that as well.
All right, so our COVID leave policy is set to expire at the end of this month. We do this pretty much every six months. It's been in place since the summer of 2020, and we've renewed it every six months since then. It has brought a meaningful degree of security and comfort to nearly every staff member at MCPL, and it's been used many times over the past three years. But on balance, use of the policy has been relatively minimal, and I will credit our internal health and safety measures dating back to the start of the pandemic for that, as well as our staff's individual responsibility and precautions, which have kept us from having anything like a staff-wide outbreak since the beginning of the pandemic. In 2022, we had 2,319 hours of paid COVID leave for a total cost to the library of So far this year, we've had staff use 469 and a half hours of COVID leave for a total cost of $9,852. So while transmission rates continue to trend downward and the use of our policy is in decline, we looked at trends in the wider employer world as well. There's no strong consensus yet among employers on when to discontinue their policies, but our sense in talking with other public libraries is that maintaining a policy like this through the end of 2023 just makes good sense, and this will allow us time to explain to staff that it is likely that the last extension, that this is the last extension of the policy, pending any significant changes in regional or nationwide transmission rates. So we're proposing extending the policy one more time through the December of this year. There are no other changes to the language in the policy other than the active date range stated.
Are there any questions or comments for Greer?
Not for the employees, but are you going to continue to have the masks outside and the hand sanitizers and those things?
Yeah, we continue to keep those in place, and we have
Even after?
Really no plans to take them away. That's an interesting question, because, you know, for businesses and organizations all over the country, is this becoming a norm to have masks and hand sanitizers and everything else? Just an effective part of operations, maybe it is. We certainly don't plan to take those away.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor of approving the extension for the temporary COVID-19 emergency paid sick leave signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. And that is the end of our regular voting agenda parts of the, voting parts of the agenda. So next, we're going to hear the department update from our Ellisville branch library manager, Chris Hostler.
Can you, can you hear me okay? Okay, excellent. Thank you for coming out to Ellisville tonight on Food Truck Wednesdays and finding a parking spot here. I'm Chris. I am the branch manager here at Ellisville, and tonight I'd like to give you a brief update on our services over this last year and some upcoming projects happening at this branch. Over the course of the last nine months, we have seen our patron counts and program attendance return to pre-pandemic levels, and we are delighted for that. We had over 3,600 patrons attend programs at the branch in the last nine months, and that's about 18 patrons per program. In particular, our programs geared towards 18 years old and up, or what we consider adult services, have increased in both number of programs and attendance here, and children's and all ages programs do remain our branch's strongest performer in terms of attendance. We have continued multiple partnerships with organizations in the Ellisville area. During the fall of 2022, our donation garden, which you can see right out the back window as you go out, donated, grew and donated over 110 pounds of produce, and that all went to pantry 279 here in the community, which is part of the Hoosier Hills Food Bank. We are doing that again this year. And we continue to host the Community Kitchen Food Truck, which is here two days a week in our front parking lot, and the Richland Bean Blossom Community Food Truck during the months of summer and on e-learning days when school is out. And thank you, Kari, for mentioning that the food truck can no longer give meals to adults for free. They had a changing in their funding parameters. The Ellisville branch staff provided intake and scheduling services for United Way of Monroe County's Free Tax Help Service for low-income residents this spring, and we hosted over 180 individual tax appointments. So tax help here at the branch is a by-registration, by appointment-by-registration service versus our downtown location, which is, is a just drop-in thing. So there is a substantial amount of staff time here involved in being the people who field the calls, make sure the folks are within scope of the service, and then set up the appointments. Fall of 2022 also saw the return of first graders coming to the branch for their annual tours. It used to be kindergartners, we're doing first grade now, and that's the first time since the pandemic began that we were having those, those classes come onsite and do tours. We've also been able to get back into the schools, our children's and teen librarians to do outreach and participate in events that they are holding onsite at the school, so we are thrilled about that. We are also happy to report in terms of our summer reading program, which is ongoing, that we are slightly ahead of last summer in terms of our participation for children's and teens at the branch, and we are way ahead in terms of adult participation in the summer reading program. Looking to the rest of 2023 in the future, we are excited to talk about some upcoming projects. We received $3,700 for the creation of a digital creativity station here at the branch from the Wall of Family Charitable Trust at the end of last year, and the community here is looking forward to seeing that being created and available this fall. And this station is similar to what we have downtown in the Level Up area with the Mac computers. It includes hardware and software dedicated to graphic arts, visual audio production, and game design. We have several facilities projects here on the horizon as well. This spring, we received a patron suggestion that the library add a sidewalk that goes between the sidewalk running along Highway 46 and our main entrance here. Right now, it's a grassy area, so if you have a stroller and you're a pedestrian trying to traverse that, or if you have mobility issues, or if it's just a muddy day out, it can be difficult. So we have begun the process of adding this sidewalk, and we're also going to use this as an opportunity to look at our bike racks and our signage, which I believe is original to this building, and potentially upgrading those areas as well. And finally, we have entered the initial stages of discussing improvements to the staff workspace and circulation areas in the building. These are spaces that were not part of our 2018 renovation. They're kind of back of the house, and they date back to 2005, so we've grown in terms of our usage here, our staffing levels and our need for storage, and we have recognized the need for gains in the efficient use of the existing spaces. So the remainder of this year, we'll see a continuation of a discussion on how to achieve this, and we will also be looking at some of the adjacent public service areas, such as our hold shelves and our public service desks, to see how they might be affected or improved during that process. So overall, we've had a very exciting year here at the branch, and we are looking forward to continuing our existing partnerships and services, introducing new ones over the next 12 months. And I wanted to thank you again for your time, and I would be delighted to answer any questions you may have.
Very excited to hear about your adult patrons and programming and readers.
I don't know what it is, but they're just going like hotcakes this year.
See, that's great.
I think, well, we did, we did change the format so that it looks more like the kids' ones, and there is a coloring board, and maybe that's, that's it.
Hey, you know, it might be.
Yeah, uh-huh.
It could be some of your students that from before, because this has been always wonderful for the children, and so they're just growing and.
They're aging, aging up, yeah, okay, yeah.
I have to say, maybe it's the prizes.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
They're prizes for adults.
And we're happy about that and able to be able to pick prizes from local areas around here and support those businesses, so.
That's right.
The t-shirts.
The t-shirts, yes.
Everybody loves the t-shirts, yeah.
Honestly, I have really admired those t-shirts.
A lot of people have asked for a t-shirt. We're going to sell them in the bookstore.
Oh, that's fantastic. Good to know.
Yeah, they're very popular.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for your wonderful update and for hosting us tonight. We appreciate your hospitality. We've come to the portion of our meeting for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to step forward and address the board at this time? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, we do, oh, we do, okay. Oh, we do. Okay.
I mean, I can't imagine our staff moving there, but I'll find out. Yeah.
They're saying the audio is in and out. You got audio is in and out for the whole meeting or just for listening? I'm not sure. They're just.
Okay. Who's going to give this a try? If you can't hear either of you, I can't hear you good.
Is it in front of a camera?
This is Greg Alexander. I am here to talk about the Southwest Branch sidewalk. The Southwest Branch, when it was a concept back in 2018, you all did a survey, and you found that 60% of people said they were going to drive, which makes sense, because most people thought the trip would be more than a while for them. Most people knew there wasn't going to be bus service, because we're talking about the Southwest Branch. So 60% thought they were going to drive. And so the library built just this incredible facility for about $2 million, a closed parking garage and a huge parking lot, and a driveway that goes all the way to the street, which makes sense. That's 40 or 60% of your customers, you've got to serve them. But in that same survey, people knew they were talking about the Southwest Branch, and they knew that it was going to be more than a while, and they still, 40% of them said they wanted to walk or bike to that facility. And, you know, they didn't get the sidewalk. That's 40% of your customers, they got absolutely nothing, no connection at all. I mean, and that's not true. We got an IOU is what we got. And you can walk on an IOU. It's why there's going to be runs all through the landscaped area in the front there, because people are walking through it. There could very well be lawsuits because it's a hard surface to walk on, and people are already tripping and falling. Or they go and they, they share the driveway with cars. A guy, you know, like a kid, a tiny kid on his bicycle sharing a driveway with cars. And so who built that driveway? Well, you guys built that driveway, just like you guys should have built the sidewalk. That's your responsibility. The plan, the plan, what do they call it? The planning department of Monroe County, they had a responsibility to tell you that, and they didn't execute their responsibility, but that doesn't excuse you from your responsibility. You guys have to build that sidewalk. And yeah, it's going to be torn up again for the construction, just like the driveway is going to be torn up again for the construction. And you guys are going to spend a lot of effort. I know that the administration, administrative staff there is going to just be overwhelmed with the work of keeping the driveway open each and every day of that construction. But the sidewalk closure, it's already started, and the construction doesn't even start until next year. That's not reasonable. So I just want you guys to understand that you can solve this problem. This is not a problem this can take the county commissioners. They may very well solve it too, but this is your responsibility. You all are responsible to the patrons that have said they're going to walk there, and that you said you were listening. That's 40% of us. I know we're not the majority, but don't we matter a little bit? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.
[Music][1724.04]